We'll call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZeele.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, we have a couple presentations here tonight. The first is recognition of police detective Tracy Hall for being named Wisconsin Police Explorer Advisor of the Year. Chief.
Hello. Thank you. Yeah, so Detective Hall is one of the lead advisors for our Explorer program. And the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Explorer Advisor Association takes nominations every year for different advisors throughout the state. And Tracy was nominated by her group of explorers. And part of that nomination is letters to the committee explaining why they think she's deserving of the award and she was selected. So that's a pretty good honor. I think Exploring has been around in Hudson for many years. That program was also started by Sergeant Hartman. And he's the lead explorer. I believe Sergeant Hartman is also a recipient of this award a few years ago.
Thank you.
But in addition to that award, Tracy took a group of explorers down to the state competition, Wisconsin Dells, the weekend of February 8th through the 10th, 7th through the 10th, I'm sorry. And one of the teams actually finished first place in crime scene investigation. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Detective Hall, and she can explain further about that competition.
We'll let the kids talk.
All right, so these are the explorers. We brought up a group of 11. We brought down three teams. And Exploring is basically a program for 14 to 21-year-olds interested in law enforcement and as a career orientation program. A little bit about the competition. Competition, like you said, was at Wisconsin Dells Chula Vista. And we basically competed in bomb threat, hostage negotiation, traffic stop, and many other scenarios. And competed with teams around the state of Wisconsin. I think that's it. We brought back a first-place trophy in crime scene. And yeah.
Anybody, any questions? Anybody?
Sure. That I received out there.
Awesome.
Nice job.
Just one second. I've got some Hudson pins here for each of you if you want to come up. And Detective, very nice job. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing with this group.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Thank you, Detective.
Thanks, Chief. Next, we have comments from citizens present. You're able to comment on anything that you would like to talk about tonight? Is there anybody? Yes, sir. Come on up, please, to the mic. To the mic. And identify yourself and your address, please.
Okay. Hi, my name is William McManus. I live at 802 Ninth Street in Hudson, Wisconsin. I'm here to appear again, unfortunately, on the somewhat odd enforcement of the snowplow parking situation. I have a couple of suggestions. This is a brief comment and just a couple of suggestions for you. Give me a chance here. This is my city of Hudson, 2018-19 snowplow exemption parking permit. And I don't think there can be too many of us. I'm number 11. Now, we paid for these at some point. I don't remember, several years ago. I paid something. So I was here last year on a similar situation. And I, you know, Mayor O'Connor, you were very kind to listen to me then. And so, council members, Mayor O'Connor, thank you for a few moments of your time. I've already introduced myself. My name is William McManus. I'm a native of Hudson. I did not grow up here, but I was born in the clinic up the hill. Very proud about that. I'm very happy to be living in Hudson since 2003. I'm very impressed with the, as we can see, we've got great police and emergency services here. I'm particularly impressed with the road crew. I think they do a superb job. However, I've one caveat regarding the snowplow exemption permits. So let me just tell you the latest example. On Sunday, February 10th, it was snowing in earnest. And by about 9:00, we, at night, we noticed that our neighbors, who were also in the same boat as us, no off-street parking, had parked in a line on the opposite street from our house on the very short Fox Street. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Fox Street. It's about 60 yards long. You could walk it in about a minute. I think it might be the shortest street in town. I went out, after I noticed that all our neighbors had parked on the opposite street, I went out and parked our two cars at about 10:00 on the opposite side of the street. On the morning of the 11th, my wife went out at about 8:15 to find that our neighbors were gone, but that we had both received parking violations. Presumably, everyone in that line of cars got tickets. I'm not sure. They were all gone to work or something. Now, you know, we have these permits for a number of years. My wife is from Ireland, where I used to live. And I will not share with you the fairly choice Anglo-Saxon verbiage, which she adorned her displeasure with this situation. You know, it's just ridiculous. So, friends, there has to be a better way to do this. Now, I'm sure other cities are doing different things. You could have a situation where north and south streets were plowed, and then everyone could move their cars to the north and south streets, and then you could do the east and west streets. I don't know. But we paid for these permits. I don't know when we paid, but we have paid. We have no alternative. We have no off-street parking. As I said, there can't be too many of us. There aren't even any places this year where we could park in our lawns. The snow is 2 and 1/2 feet deep out there, guys. I don't know what to do. The citation, I have these two citations, which I'm prepared to pay for this evening. I have my check already made out. And I've passed my 10 days, so I've added an extra $10. The citation says the officer was on hand at 5:36 a.m. on Little Teeny Fox Street, when it can't be an important through street. It's difficult for me to believe that this could be a priority. The result has to be that, and I can't be alone in this, that people feel as if we're sort of being picked on or victimized here for the simple problem of, you know, being... I was thinking about this. I thought, maybe there's 10% of us in town who don't have off-street parking. I think it must be less, because I'm number 11. So I have a little handout here. I don't know if you want to see it, but I'd be happy to hand them around if you want to see it. These are my ideas for altering this particular ordinance. So, one, I'm asking for no police action of any kind regarding parking during a snowplow event before 9:00 a.m. I think that's only fair. If this had been the case on the 11th, I wouldn't be here. Two, I'm asking for warning tags only for all cars parked on the street during a snowplow event for the first 24 hours. Again, if this had been the policy, I wouldn't be here bothering you with this. And the third idea that I have is that for those of us who have these exemption permits, don't give us any tickets at all during a snowplow event. We've already demonstrated to you that we're willing to go out of our way to play by the rules. We have to come down here every year and ask for a brand-new permit, fill out a form, get them sent to us days later. I want to play by the rules, but when we do something like we did on the 10th, and then we still get a ticket, the obvious conclusion is that there's something amiss with the priorities or something. Or why are we wasting, you know, valuable police time on a 60-yard-long street? So, one more point. This is slight, this is parenthetical, it's not really related to the ticket thing. However, I finally got a snowblower. I've been trying like hell to clear the corner lot sidewalk that we have. It's about, I don't know, there's a couple hundred feet of sidewalk there. And I did it yesterday again. So this morning, I came out, and the snowplow, who must have been going about, I don't know how you'd manage this, he must, maybe he went 50, 60 miles an hour down Ninth Street, had blown large chunks of ice and snow across the sidewalk, not just in front of my house, but about two or three blocks long. So those of us that had already been out there with their snowblowers had to go out there and do, actually, you couldn't do it with my snowblower. I have to go out there and hand shovel it now. So there's gigantic chunks of, you know, concrete block-sized ice across the entire sidewalk. I don't know how he did it, because the boulevard's eight feet wide. So maybe if the guy could slow down, or just if he's in a big hurry, come back later when he can slow down. So that's a suggestion. I have the tickets here. I'm willing to pay them right now. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. McManus. Sorry about your problems. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? All right, close that portion of the agenda. Discussion, possible action on consent agenda items.
Consent agenda items for tonight's meeting are: to approve the regular meeting minutes from the February 4, 2019 council meeting; to approve the following claims in the amount of $13,751,045.12; place on file the Public Utilities Commission meeting minutes of January 8, 2019, and February 12, 2019; public utilities 2018 fourth-quarter report; approve the temporary beer/wine license application submitted by the Hudson Hockey Association for their Hudson hockey sportsman rifle scheduled for March 30, 2019, at the Drew Whiskey Arena; approve the temporary beer/wine license application submitted by the Hudson Rotary Club for their Taste of Hudson event scheduled for May 23, 2019, at the Lakefront Park; approve the operator license application submitted by Sarah Edwards; approve the appointment of interim finance director.
Can you pull that, please?
Yes. Approve a vehicle lease agreement for the fire department; approval to proceed with obtaining bids for the new fire station; approval of the 2019 Vine Street improvements plans and specifications, and Haggen Street Trail improvements, and to authorize Bolton and May to proceed with the advertisement for bids; approve the appointment to the...
Could you pull that item K, please?
K, sure. Approve the appointment to the downtown design review committee; approve the comprehensive plan request for proposals.
Could you pull that one for me?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve with the exception of items H, K, and M. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZeele.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item H.
I just asked to have that pulled. I'm not opposed to it, per se, but I just wondered, did we have any other options that we considered? I didn't know if there was any alternatives to this. I know Devin's taken on a lot of roles over the years. It's my understanding he already has a workload that's greater than one person. Just wanted to know if we had any other options.
Historically, the last, when Betty Cruzel left and when Neil Solotus left, you know, I filled in. It's really more so for utility building and payroll, and a lot of the activities, you know, will continue on. It's more so to have someone to, if there's documentation that needs to be signed, as finance director or those type of things. So it isn't... Brenda's going to have everything ready for audit, so that's all be taken care of. So hopefully, as we said, we're going to hopefully have a fairly short turnaround this time.
Sure, sure. I just didn't know if there's ever any other options that...
You know, if it was going to be a long-term situation where maybe you were looking at doing something else, you could possibly go out and seek someone. You know, if you knew it was going to be six months or a year, I've seen that where communities maybe are going to do some restructuring or something.
So internally, there are no really other options to consider?
Yeah, there was the accountant who, you know, well, she's fairly new as well. But like I said, I'm going to rely on staff. I've already talked to the finance committee about it. I'm not, you know, I appreciate the fact that you understand there's a lot going on, but the fact that Brenda's going to have everything ready for audit...
Right. It's just that really, we have so much going on, like you said.
When, for example, when Neil left, he left at, you know, in November. So it was, you know, that was a little bit more of a challenge, because I had to get everything ready for audit on top of everything else. Whereas, like I said, Brenda's going to have everything done, so. If I need help, I'll ask, I promise.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item K?
Item K, I had a concern, and I don't have the minutes for the Public Works Committee out, but Paul and Sarah, you can help me remember. I thought we said that that bike lane was going to go straight, wasn't going to go up on the sidewalk. Do you remember that discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, here it's described as going up on the sidewalk, but we specifically said we didn't want it to do that.
Right, right. I'm glad you caught that.
Yep.
So now you could tell us why.
I printed these out. Top one is kind of the current system, and I highlighted the current bike lane. And then the second sheet is, we propose changing the Hudson and Vine intersection. At Public Works Committee, we did, the committee did want to keep it on the road, as it is currently. I did check with the traffic engineer after the meeting and told him about the committee's request. And he said, due to the width of the lane and adding in the two new lanes, that it just wasn't feasible to keep that bike lane, designated bike lane, there's not enough, there's not enough width, basically, unless we start bumping back curbs and obtaining more right-of-way to keep that bike lane on the road. So they suggested diverting it onto the sidewalks, like 200 feet south of that intersection.
Yeah, I understand that proposal, but our proposal was that the bike lane become part of the through lane, not a separate lane. It's, it becomes, it's actually part of that through lane, which is done on a lot, a lot of places. I mean, you, I've seen many, many cases where that's the way a bike lane was handled.
But if you have a designated bike lane on the road, it has to have its own designation. It has to have its own, you can have the bike lane, what do I say, be a part of that through traffic lane.
Absolutely, you can.
So if someone gets hit on there...
Absolutely, you can. Shared roadway, that's what it's called.
Okay.
Something, maybe we need to, we need to look a little bit deeper into that to verify that, but I've seen it many places, and I can, sure, I can...
No, that's fine. I can, I can, that's what the traffic engineer suggested to me and told me.
I know that. I'm sorry, but...
Yeah, and I'm just doing what he tells me, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
But just so...
I don't know how I say this carefully, but sometimes the traffic engineers are not up-to-date on how to handle bikes and automotive together.
Yeah.
That's all you said.
Jim, what do you want to do?
Well, I think, you know, I would approve everything, except we need to figure out how we're going to handle that. It's not a, it's not a big impact that I see. The other problem is putting up on the sidewalk, that's not a white sidewalk there. That's not sufficient for biking pads, so you're going to have to rebuild the sidewalk to make that correct. So...
You want that portion to go back to committee, or what?
We can go back to the committee, but we're going to have to bring some resource in somehow, you know, to resolve this, because it's, you know, we have a, we have a pretty strong opinion, but it's an opinion of going up against a person who's supposed to be educated, but I don't think from, I've got a lot of ad hoc experience.
And what I don't want to do is I don't want to delay the project either.
Exactly.
Nor do I.
This has to...
Are you going to challenge engineers, what you're trying to do?
I'm asking them to look at it in a, broaden the box that they're using, and look at how it's being done, look at ASHTO, look at, you know, look at National, some of the more up-to-date ASHTO studies and recommendations. There are things out there that are methodologies that are being used other places. So I think we need to, and I don't know the engineers' credentials.
I'd like to move that we approve the design as it's presented and contingent upon research, however you want to word it.
On resolving that issue between staff...
Yes, but to continue with this project, I want to move it forward. That's my motion.
Yeah, we can, we can get it published and get the, you know, the bids going and...
I can second that.
Second that? All right, everybody good with that?
Yep.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
No. I move we approve the design as presented, contingent that we are, however...
Staff resolving with...
Staff resolving what she's...
Public Works Committee.
Yeah, the bike trail issue regarding on the road or on the sidewalk.
Thank you, Randy.
That's what I said.
Yeah, wherever it's located on the...
And just, I'm sorry, just for clarification, so we don't have to run into this issue with everything we do.
Yep.
The biking committees. We need to make sure our engineers are going down the same path, so we don't delay projects anymore just for these bike lane things. Because otherwise, we're going to get tripped up on every project coming down the pipe. And I don't want to deal with it.
Yep, yep, understood. All right, anybody else?
Just to address that, we are making an effort to try to figure out how we bring, this came out of Public Works.
I know, Jim, but there's, it's just been a lot of past practice of stopping or trying to stop projects for bike lanes. And I'm getting tired of it. Just my opinion.
Well, my opinion is that we may, maybe we need to move forward and to actually think about bike lanes when we, when we design things. So it's not, we don't have to rebuild the project at the end.
Everybody good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Mike. Item M.
Yeah, I just wanted to get Mike, Michael up here. I'm sorry.
Tiffany's here.
Oh, it's Tiffany, I'm sorry.
Ah.
Sorry about that.
You have to use their, you have to use their last names like we do now.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So I don't, I have, so can you just talk generally about, I know there, I read this, there's a need to update the comprehensive plan, obviously, from the Wisconsin state laws, I read it. So the idea is to put on RFP for consultants for up to $100,000, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yep.
And then can you just talk about, and I read through this, but can you just talk a little bit about how you guys see this kind of playing out? And this is the first time I've been through a comprehensive plan, so can you just fill me in a little bit? I'm kind of, I kind of want more education, not only for me, but for the folks watching tonight, too, so.
Funny enough, that's the same situation for me, too, Paul, is the first comprehensive plan I'm a part of. So if Mike wants to jump in and give some input, that'd be great. But as far as first steps go, once we get a consultant on board, they'd help set up a schedule, and we'd be able to reach out to community members, get some feedback from them, so that we can actually write a document down that helps to outline what direction the city and its residents want to go within the next 20 years. If you have anything else to add.
So the state of Wisconsin requires that municipalities update their comp plans every 10 years. So this will be, I've been through a few of these. Generally, they take time. You want to plan for time. You want to plan for significant amount of public involvement, because this plan does set the vision of the community from, especially from a land use and built environment standpoint, right, for the next 20 years. So you'll see some pretty big topics, and I think it goes back to what the discussion was earlier on bike trails or just general transportation issues. We need to be planning for these things, not reactively or as they're happening, in short-range planning, but long-range planning. And this is what the comp plan is. It's a living, breathing document. You've seen over the past few months, or at least in my tenure, we've seen our, we've seen amendments to the comp plan for land use. We've seen amendments to incorporate past plans that we've done, the downtown parking, the waterfront vision study, the Carmichael Road corridor study. So the idea is to pull from all those studies that have looked into the future, but also you want to have them in one place. And you want it to help guide your decisions, not only from a land use standpoint, but from an economic development standpoint, transportation, environmental, you know, what do we really want this community to look like in the next 20 years? So that's my, I guess, little elevator. It's a fun process, it is. It gets, you know, it gets people out, it gets people involved. It touches on some areas that, you know, obviously need to be discussed, so.
And then Mike Wirth says, so it says, "Due to the availability of the following documents, the city feels that several sections will be completed with their assistance." And then it lists like the reports that have been done in the past, like the parking survey. So is the idea that, that those are updated, or is the idea that that's just put in there as part of like, we've done this research, or...
No, those are not just studies that we've done, but they're ones that the county has done, there are studies that the regional planning, the RPC, the Regional Planning Commission's done. So it's, it's going to be set up as a repository. So as these consultants are putting together proposals, they see the issues and the trends. It gives them a good catalog and guidebook to start digging into some of what, you know, familiarize themselves with Hudson, but also understand what some of those major issues are.
And then, is our role as council then, do we, do we have any input into this, or is it something that's done kind of independently and then it's reviewed? How does that?
It really depends. It depends on the proposal, right? Some groups will, the traditional comp plan processes, you have, you know, like a subcommittee that works through things. I've seen committees of the whole take charge and really drive the process. I've seen processes that, you know, really remove the elected officials out of it and just bring in the public and say, you know, as long as you have somebody that can facilitate that discussion. I've seen that happen and be successful. I've seen online forums, I've seen, and I really think it's a good idea, and hopefully the firms that are looking to put together a proposal will watch this. And I think that the idea here is to be open to different ways to engage the public and engage the council and Plan Commission and other committees within the city.
Just, can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Just so you understand, though, there's, the statute requires public participation type procedures, and the consultant will work with staff to figure those out. But ultimately, the Plan Commission reviews it and makes a recommendation.
Correct.
And then the council adopts it, or reviews it, and if it approves it, adopts it as an ordinance.
Okay.
So that's just the process.
And then, are you comfortable with the $100,000? Like, is that a...
That's an...
How does that number come?
It has, the city's been through the past budgets, past three, four years, setting aside money.
Okay.
Leading up to knowing that we had to do this.
Okay. So... I don't think it was 100.
No, I want to say it was 50 to 60, somewhere in there, if I remember right. Because I think we budgeted $30,000 two years, so it was in that. And we maybe had to allocate a little bit more, but it was in that 50 to 70 range, I believe. But that was 2009.
Nine, yep.
Nine or 10.
The document, the bones of the document are good. The data needs to be updated. Obviously, we need to hear more from people now.
One thing that we're already hearing about is public transportation. And I don't see anything in here specifically about public transportation, and I don't see the county's report cited here.
Yep, we can certainly add that to the, and that was a conversation that I had earlier today, too, yep.
I'll move to approve.
I'm sorry, Joyce?
I'll move to approve the request for proposals.
It's okay.
Got a motion, second to approve.
Just so everybody's aware, then, when they get the proposals back, then you'll actually make the approval and the allocation of the money, and not actually spending the money right now, so.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you. Well, now that we're through the consent agenda. Let's see, I need to go back. Okay. Discussion possible action on approving Resolution 2-19, initial resolution authorizing the preliminary issuance of general obligation bonds for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a new fire station in a maximum principal amount of $5,850,000.
Sean Lenz is here for Miller's and Associates to go through the information he presented earlier and then discuss each of the different resolutions that might have to be approved tonight.
Thank you, Devin. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I think you've got hopefully two pre-sale reports, and they really work together. So I'll start with the Series A, but we'll really be talking about the finance plan overall and touching on both reports. What the city has done the last couple bond issues and note issues is we've combined two years' worth of financing. So in, I think it was 2017 was our last go-around, in an effort to, to take care of two years' worth of projects at one time. And so we've had an overall strategy moving forward with that approach in mind. So if I can have everyone go to Exhibit 1 of the pre-sale report for the $5,960,000 corporate purpose bonds. The projects, I worked with Brenda on the projects for this two-year period. And then we worked with the bond attorney, and we put them into two categories based on a couple of different criteria. The bond issue is targeting primarily street and the, the fire station project. They fit under the statutory authority for the issuance of bonds, which is debt going out up to 20 years. And the types of projects very, match very well with paying the, paying over a time period that matches with the useful life of the project, or does the financing in a shorter term than the useful life of 20 years. So in working with Brenda, if you look at the bottom of the page, we've put together the sizing of the issue with the $5,960,000. And if you look at the sources of funds, I just wanted to highlight two things. We're doing about a million and a half, a million 550 in streets, but you'll see a good chunk of that, almost 700,000 is coming from state funding, and the remaining portion is for bonding. And then on the, the fire station, the project amount is at the 7 million, so where you see deposit to project fund. And if you look up above, the bonding is into two categories, cash contribution, which is made up of the capital improvement fund, and then dollars you're taking out of your undesignated fund balance in order to make a contribution to lower the borrowing.
I'd like to clarify that amount.
True.
I think I had brought it up a couple of different times on whether we wanted to max at the 200, or 2 million.
Yep.
And reduce it over the longevity of the loan would be cheaper for us or smarter for us to ask to bond more and take less of our cash contribution.
I guess that's a question. You know, no, I, maybe I'll start, or go ahead, Brenda, you start.
We did lower it. We had 2 million coming from the general fund and then the 525,000 from the capital project funds. And so we did lower the general fund contribution to 1.5.
Okay, so this is just reflecting the combination on the cash?
Combination on the cash.
Okay. So it's 1.5.
1.5 from the general.
Plus over...
1, 1.5 million from the general fund and then 525,000 from the capital projects' undesigned fund balance.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, was there any other questions then on just the total package for the bond issue? So again, the primary categories are streets and fire station for this borrowing. On the top of the page, then, you'll see the proposed repayment schedule over a 20-year period. The first eight years of the 20-year term would be non-callable or non-prepayable. And the last 12 years, the city council at any time during that period of time could make prepayments or refinance the entire debt. So the first eight years, non-callable, last 12 years, callable. And the payments are entirely expected to be paid back through your annual budget as part of your tax levy that the, the city would set. As Devin mentioned, to tie this back to the resolutions as we go through this, the way the, the statutory process for issuing bonds works, step one is the council will approve three resolutions, well, actually, four resolutions related to the issuance of bonds. One will be for the street portion in the amount of 875,000. And one will be for the fire station portion for, in the amount of 5,850,000. A third resolution is to publish the approval of those two initial resolutions. And then the fourth resolution combines them into a single bond issue for sale of the 5,960,000. Now that doesn't lock into the final rates and terms. That'll happen in April. We'll take the bids and, and bring those back for your approval. But the statutory issuance process, that's step one for this evening on the agenda. The other thing before leaving the bonds that I wanted to update the council on are Exhibits 2 and 3. The state does limit the amount of general obligation debt the city can issue to 5% of the equalized value of the city. So if you look at the red line at the top of the page, 5% of the total value of Hudson is about 95 million. And that's your total borrowing capacity. And if you look at the blue bars at the bottom, and this is inclusive of the proposed two issues that we're going to talk about this evening, the 5 million and the $2 million issue, we're at about approximately 25, 26 million. So you are well, very far short of that, that limit, just so you know where you sit. The second item that we've tried to keep the council updated on, Exhibit 3. Here, we wanted to give you a little bit of a view of the impact of these two loans on the overall debt levy that the city ha, will have. And so I'd, I'd have you focus on the blue bars. This year, 2019, you've set your budget last year in 18, and you're at about 2.3, I think it is, in that range, Brenda, the, the total debt levy. And in working with Brenda, what we've set up for the repayment of this new debt on top of the existing debt is for the next two years, the debt levy will remain at the same level that it was this year. And so as Brenda and I have worked together, Devin's been a part of this, we've been, a strategy of trying to set the, the city up where we try to keep it at level, and then as you look at the blue bars going from left to right, they're set up to decline so that depending on the capital projects that come up in 2021, the next planned two-year borrowing, we've got some capacity to add that new debt at that point, try to stay at that same overall number, which I think fits well with your budget and kind of dovetails back to a five-year plan that we did a few years ago. And I know some of the council were, were a part, active part, participants in that. So I think that's a real good picture that we're adding a major project right now in the fire station, but kind of keeping it overall at, at that same total debt levy for your next couple of years' budgets.
You anticipate some kind of a rate reaction on our bonding rate?
On the rating? I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're starting to push more. We're at that AA2, again, very good rating for the city. As you continue to grow, your fund balances remained very strong. I think we can continue to start making those arguments, hey, think of us maybe as a AA1. So we'll, we will certainly push on that, Randy, as we talk with Moody's here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
What do we need to do to get there?
I think the biggest factors, the last time for Hudson, were honestly just pure size in terms of, you know, how many people live here, how big is the tax base, Mayor? My recollection is that was kind of the biggest area, and you guys can't do a lot about that, but you are doing what you can in the economic development and redevelopment initiatives. So, yeah, they, you know, they, remember, they compare you to communities all across the country. And how much cash you have, the wealth indices of the people who live here, and that tax base are big factors. Some you guys have a lot of control over, some not as much. And so I think as you continue to grow, that's, that's going to be what I think is the biggest factor getting us hopefully to that AA1. And again, why do we want that? Lower interest rates. That, that's really why we're trying to get those better, higher ratings. But again, you guys are at a very good point compared to many other communities with that AA2 rating. It's a very good rating. Any other questions on the bond issue before we'll move, Mayor, is it okay to move to the notes and kind of talk about it all as one?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. The, the second handout, excuse me, the promissory notes. As we looked at the whole list of projects for 2019 and '20, some of the projects don't fit into the bond categories. And they tend to be projects with a shorter useful life. So they fit much better into another borrowing option that cities have in Wisconsin, which are general obligation promissory notes. So if you go to Exhibit 1, over the next couple of years, we have about 2,124,000 in capital projects. So these are vehicles, equipment primarily that are in this category. And we're going to pay that back over a 10-year period, as you look at the top of the page, fully amortized over a 10-year period. And those exhibits that I just reviewed with the council, Exhibits 2 and 3 on the other report, they're inclusive of the numbers you're seeing here. I didn't attach those same exhibits again. But the plan again, overall, was to have this debt and the bond issue fit into the overall debt structuring with that, keeping at the same level and then falling in the future, giving you that capacity should other projects come up in the future. And just to finish up, if you go back one page to the schedule, the last thing I wanted to mention to the council, well, well, two things. One, there is a, the, the fifth resolution for this evening is to move ahead with the process of the note issue. And there's just one resolution for the council doing that this evening. And then for the schedule going forward, tonight's our pre-sale review with the council. If everything is approved on those resolutions, we will begin the process of putting all the, the documentation together, the disclosure to issue the bonds, and we'll be working with staff on that. That document called the official statement will go out toward the end of March. We will have a rating agency call, as I referenced earlier, and Randy brought up the rating, and the mayor had a question as well. We expect that to be at the very end of March or April 1st, and we'll get feedback to the council as to how that went. And then we're scheduled for the sale on April 8th. And on April 8th in the morning, we'll take bids on the bond issue and the note issue, work with staff on any adjustments that need to be made, and bring that back for your review the evening of the 8th at the council meeting. Okay? So I covered a lot of ground. I know, I appreciate your patience on that, but if there's any questions, be happy to answer that. And then following that, Mayor, there's those, I believe, five resolutions for the council action this evening.
Questions?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution 2-19.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt Resolution 2-19. Motion, second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution 3-19.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt Resolution 3-19. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on approving Resolution 4-19, a resolution directing publication of notice to electors.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended. Discussion.
No.
What?
Didn't we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't, oh, I apologize. Getting ahead of myself.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
419.
419, yeah. We got a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, motion, second to approve Resolution 4-19. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on approving Resolution 5-19, a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019A, in the maximum principal amount of $5,960,000.
Move to suspend the rules.
Got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution 5-19.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve Resolution 5-19. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on approving Resolution 6-19, a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2019B, in the maximum principal amount of $2,200,000.
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution 6-19.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adopt Resolution 6-19. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. We're all out of those, that's too bad, huh? Excellent, all right. So next thing we have is closed session, but before we go there, I just wanted to, because I don't know, you know, when, when, what time we might come back and who might be here, who might not be here when we get back. So I just wanted to recognize Brenda Malinowski. Obviously, everybody knows that Brenda has, unfortunately for us, I sincerely believe that, tendered her resignation for the city. It has been my pleasure in particular to work with Brenda. I think that she is the most talented financial director that I have ever worked with. And I, I am very sorry that we are losing her. And I can't tell you, I'm still in denial, so I think that...
Me too.
I don't think she's going anywhere, frankly, but... No, I, I, it's, obviously Brenda is moving on into what she believes is things that are going to be better for her, for her family, for her future, and for that, I'm, I'm delighted. And I hope everything goes well for you in your, in the future. And if it doesn't, we'll have an interim director for a little while anyway. But Brenda, it truly has been my pleasure and an honor to have worked with someone as good at what you do as you are. And I can't thank you enough for helping me understand some pretty complicated numbers that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And as I said, it's going to be a tremendous loss to all of us here at the city as a resource.
And echoing his statements, the staff feels that way as well, so she will be very much missed.
So, did you want to say anything, Brenda, at all, other than adios?
No, I just want to thank the mayor and the council. You, you make decisions for your family, and that's what this is. And so I've enjoyed it, I've enjoyed the staff. You have tremendous department heads here, I think you all know it. And the person that fills my shoes, they will do so great because of the council, the mayor and the department heads. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. Good luck. On that note, discussion possible action on convening into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, negotiation of development agreements between the City of Hudson and Clearview Developers LLC, 517 Second Street, 517 to 9, 519 Second Street.
Move to go into closed session.
Second. Got a motion, second to go into closed session. Roll call. On motion, a second to go into closed session, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, we will go into closed session and be back, wait a minute, are we, Kathy, just one second, do we, are we going in for two different things tonight? Or just the one? Okay, all right, sounds good. Do you cross the screen? We are back in open session.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
I guess I am just moving to adopt the resolution. Adopt the resolution.
7-19.
7-19, thank you.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adopt Resolution 7-19, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Any other announcements, anybody, anything?
Just recognize Hudson High School's got some excellent sports going on, state bound hockey, both women and men, and basketball, I think gymnastics.
Wrestling did well, yeah. We were doing very, very well.
The dance team took second at state in both, it's the first time that's happened.
What's that?
The dance team took second at state in both, it's the first time any high school in Wisconsin's placed in the top five in both, two of the three categories.
Awesome, we got it.
Okay, I've got, I've got some things that I'd like to bring up. First of all, most of the employee performance evaluations have been done, but not Devin's. So I'd like to propose that we, oh, you've already.
Well, Rich is working on it, right?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, so what's the process? I mean, will it be discussed with the, with the council or shown to the council or how does that work?
Well, I, you know what, that part I don't know. It was just going to be up to this point, just a discussion between Devin and me, but if you guys think that we need to have that.
We can provide copies if you want and.
All right, I'm just wondering what was, what was going on and how it was going to be done, so, yeah, I would like to see.
In the past, normally it's been the mayor and the administrator, but, you know, obviously they're confidential, but you're welcome to have copies of them, so.
Mm-hmm. And then, Rich, I want to thank you for canceling the EMS Ad-Hoc Committee meeting today and rescheduling it for March 11th. I think that was the appropriate decision. Will the public input agenda item be on the March 11th Ad-Hoc Committee agenda and also on the council agenda this evening?
Yeah, same thing.
For both, in both places.
It was on both.
Yeah, okay, good. So, and, so I want to make sure there's enough time for everyone to comment.
And I will get that on the website tomorrow.
Okay, good. Because although the legal requirements were met for scheduling the public input on the EMS issue at the canceled meeting, I don't think the spirit of the law was honored. And I want to invite the public to the March 11th meeting to give us input on how we should deliver ambulance services. I noticed that the agenda item was announced on Wednesday night, Wednesday, right after the last week's paper was printed, so it did not appear in the paper. I hope the Star Observer publishes a notice about this opportunity for public input. I want to know what our citizens are thinking and believe the other council members would like to know too. I have some concerns about how this process has played out. I've struggled with how to bring this up, but I believe there have been some things going on behind the scenes that need to be brought into the open before the public input session. The council has tried to keep the RFP process for ambulance service open and transparent since that is what citizens have requested after the previous process. I can't help but believe, based on the events as they have unfolded, that there's a coordinated effort at some level to undermine our option to maintain a publicly operated EMS and to back the city into a corner where the only available option is a contract with Lakeview EMS. It started with the town of Hudson contracting with Lakeview and subsequently pulling out of the contract with the city of Hudson and St. Croix EMS. One of the town board members has told several people that Mayor O'Connell approached the town board supervisor and suggested that they contract with Lakeview, undercutting the contract with our city. The town board implemented that decision. As you know, the EMS business model relies on these other municipalities for economies of scale and for revenue. Removing even one of them weakens the financial foundations of our business model, making it more difficult to come up with a fair cost to the partner municipalities. This takes away two sources of revenue from St. Croix EMS, patient billing from the lost runs and the payment the town of Hudson makes as part of the contract. The next step that hurt St. Croix EMS was the announcement that Lakeview EMS was going to take all of the interfacility transfers out of the hospital. These transfers are an important source of revenue that has helped St. Croix EMS keep the costs to the municipal partners down. This announcement was made at the meeting to assess and discuss the proposals and looked to be strategically timed after the RFPs were in, and it was too late to modify them, which forced one of the potential services to back out of the RFP process. In taking these transfers, Lakeview EMS is not licensed in Wisconsin to do critical care transfers, and yet they are doing them even though St. Croix EMS is licensed and available to do these transfers. In addition, they have not submitted an updated operational plan for the town of Hudson, which is required by the state, before taking 911 calls in a new area. Why aren't they playing by the rules? According to our request for proposals, our service provider must conform to Wisconsin law at all times. Patients have a choice of ambulance service when getting transported from the hospital. Patients should be offered a choice of services that are licensed for the level of care needed when they need to be transported to another facility. The choices have now come down to keeping St. Croix EMS or contracting with Lakeview EMS. The city is not required to take either of the proposals, we can reject all proposals and make a new plan. St. Croix EMS utilizes a quick response vehicle so that a paramedic gets to the scene ahead of the ambulance. Lakeview's model calls for the paramedics to be in the ambulance. We have three ambulance services in the area that are doing well with community support and reasonable fees to the partner municipalities, New Richmond, Baldwin and River Falls. I propose we apply their models to our service. If they can do it, we can do it. We need the community support to make that happen. We need to protect our city residents' health and safety and future access to care. We also need to protect the city's future financial interests. If we contract this service out and subsequently sell our ambulances, it will be extremely difficult and expensive to rebuild our service. In addition, once an initial contract has expired, there's no guarantee that we can contract for the same services at similar rates, which may put us into the same bind again. We cannot risk that for our city. I would like to invite everyone to attend the meetings on March 11th and express their opinions. If someone is unable to attend, they can send their input to a council member with a request that have been entered into the record. Thank you.
Anybody? All right, well, first of all, there are a couple of things that I would like to say. I, I don't particularly like the fact that you are suggesting that I was the one that was the impetus for the town of Hudson moving their service.
Well, that's what one of the supervisors said.
Well, you know what, you know what Joyce, really? You haven't even asked me that question. You're listening to some supervisor out there?
Okay.
Really? You haven't even asked me the question.
All right, then I'll ask you the question.
And, and the answer is no, I did not do that.
Okay.
All right, and, and I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly how this went. About a year ago, Jeff Johnson and I were talking, and we were talking about EMS, and we were talking about the contract, and I had asked him if he had ever read the contract. And he said, no, he had not. And he asked me if I would send him the contract, which I did. And like I said, that was about a year ago, all right? And after, after that, we had a discussion, and he said that he read the contract, and he said, I can't, after reading this contract, I cannot believe that this, your council did not take them up on their offer. All right? And that was the end of the conversation.
Okay.
Until Jeff happened to, I'm sorry, I was watching one of your Ad-Hoc Committee meetings when Mr. Tremble from the town of Hudson, one of Jeff's constituents, went off gratuitously on a bunch of old white guys, as he said, that were running the town of Hudson. You may recall that meeting and that discussion. And had nothing to do with EMS, he just went off on, on the folks that were running the town of Hudson out there. And I can't remember everything that he said, but it had to do with the taxation and the fact that they were at levy limits, and because they had not been increasing taxes over the period of time when they instituted levy limits, they got stuck in, in the cycle that they're in right now, and they are currently at levy limits. And of course, for the first time, as you all know, had to borrow money in their history, first time in their history, they had to borrow money, and that was for road repairs because they couldn't get a referendum passed in order to pay for road repairs and go beyond levy limits. So I just happened to give him a call the next day and asked him if he watched the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting and he, if what his reaction was to Mr. Tremble going off on him and the rest of the members of the board. He advised me that he had not seen that, and asked me if I would send him the link to that meeting, which I did. He called me the next day and said, he went off, and he said, I can't believe this guy, I can't remember everything he said, but he was mad. And he said, I am so mad that I called John Mueller today, and we are having a conversation.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
There you go, all right? So that's how that happened. And every single conversation I had with Jeff since then, up until the time of his passing, every conversation I had, he referenced that meeting again and referenced his constituent, Mr. Tremble, going off on a bunch of old white guys, keeping them down in the town of Hudson. That's.
Okay, well, my goal is to keep this an open process.
So, well, yeah, well, that's great, open, open to the extent that you start throwing accusations out without even talking to me. You're listening to somebody, you believe what somebody else had to say out there without even coming to me and asking me.
Well, I'm reporting what I'm.
I don't particularly appreciate that.
All right, well, I apologize, and I'm, I'm glad that we've got this out in the open.
Second, you know, the whole thing about the transfers with, with Lakeview and, you know, we're demonizing, there are people here in this council that continue to demonize Lakeview.